Our minutes, or we just let it, let it roll?
Work its way. We can, we can certainly make that clarification in the minutes if you'd like.
If, if the rest of commission's okay with it, I'd like to see that in there so we know we're heading in a specific direction.
Works for me. I, I know that all the comments have to be, you know, deciphered and put into the right category. And from what I remember, it was like Hannah said, is it going to be a code revision? Is it going to be a comp plan revision? Or remake or whatever? So I guess we'll just have to wait and see what comes back. But yeah, we can, we can add the clarification and, and put Hannah's name in there if you want some.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that she, that staff or Hannah or staff is going to come back with the appropriate next action items. Yeah. Whether it be code or something else.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So we have a slight change to the minutes. Motion's still good. And the second, I guess we should have to second amended.
Oh, moved.
Thank you. So any more discussion in the minutes? No, we'll call for the question.
Commissioner West.
Sorry about that. That was on mute. I was on, I wasn't at the last meeting as well. So.
Okay, Commissioner Sipperly?
I don't know if I should.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Postco?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Ben, I think I talked over you. Did you want to abstain?
I, I mean, I can answer that we've received the minutes, yes, but I was not at the meeting.
Okay, good. Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Moving on to comments from citizens that are appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. And if anybody's here to voice their comments about anything we should be concerned with, please raise your hand. And I see none, so we'll close this.
Sorry, again, I'm not sure it's a question critical, but you, Steve didn't call my name again.
I'm sorry, why?
Is Amber here?
Or if he did, I didn't.
No, I'm so sorry. I have a.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure. There's no procedure. Maybe I should just eat my dinner and give up on y'all.
No, 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 we love you. Commissioner Whissing. I keep thinking I heard her name.
I know, right?
I, I, I know.
I think it's Weston Whissing and like he got kind of like the W, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That went, that, that was the last vote for the receiving of the minutes. So anyway. Um, new items for tonight. Let's start with planning file fifty-nine twenty. Consideration of a special use permit to allow accessory outdoor storage at five-one-zero-seven-nine highway twenty-four. And I think that's Emory telling us what's going on.
Yeah, Marco. Thanks. First, could we promote, we have two attendees. Can't we just big old tires? On the attendees, if we could promote Laura Mizushima and Martin Linderos. Can we, are we able to do that?
Think so. Steve's on it. Looks like it.
Would be good.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, so planning file fifty-nine twenty is consideration for a special use permit for accessory outdoor storage on the Big O property located at five-one-zero-seven-nine highway six and twenty-four. Proposed accessory outdoor storage is the use of three temporary storage containers to be placed on the property for tire storage. And I have a short presentation that I will share my screen here shortly to go through for planning and zoning commission. Just a second. Is everyone able to see? Okay. So special use permit planning five fifty-nine twenty. Again, consideration for the special use permit for accessory outdoor storage. And so we have one action item is to permit accessory outdoor storage in the form of three temporary storage containers to be placed on the Big O Tires property. Staff has made a recommendation to approve the special use permit with findings and conditions on page six of the staff report. So just a little bit about the current use of the property. It's a nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot lot. The building itself is five thousand four hundred and seventy-two square feet. And the current use is the Big O Tires Auto Repair and Tire Store. And you can see on your right, there's one storage container there. So that is going to be the location of the proposed storage. The current zoning is PUD Glenwood Springs Mall. And there are several adjacent land uses, Glenwood Springs Mall being one of them. Also an auto parts retail store, a drive-through bank, which is Alpine Bank, office space, auto dealerships to the farther to the west, and then also a gas station, which recently applied for conversion to marijuana retail. And that would actually be in the commercial zoning district or excuse me, that's mixed use on the far right. And so those are the neighboring uses. And then here we have the current proposal for the special use permit. And so you can see the storage containers. So they would be basically the shipping containers. And that's A, C, and D. They would be seven feet wide, seven feet tall, forty feet long. They would be set twenty-one and a half feet from the property line. You can see there the yellow hash marks. And then they would also be accompanied by a forty-four foot wide screen fence on the south end of the property. So again, that fence would be six feet tall and would be made out of wood to fulfill the screening requirement. Also to, to mention this application was submitted in reaction to a code violation letter sent out for unscreened outdoor storage and accessory outdoor storage. So that's what this application is coming from. Here are the code references. So again, an outdoor storage area shall be screened from view of public rights away, which in this case is highway six. But any use of fences, walls, burns, or landscaping that is at least six feet tall in height and provides a permanent opaque year round screen. So again, the wood fence would screen the outdoor storage area. And the other code reference is which designated accessory outdoor storage as a special use permit. So staff has determined that current code considers the use of these temporary storage containers, shipping containers. We are here today discussing a special use permit for that use. So with a special use permit, we have set a review criteria. The first being the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. So there's an auto repair store currently operating at the site. And then as described earlier, we have a mix of uses in proximity to the area, drive-through bank, auto supply, auto dealership. There's also, at the Glenwood Springs Mall, there is already an approved outdoor display area, which is for retail, which is not screened. And that was previously approved on two thousand and twelve. So again, comparing the surrounding uses, staff believes that this proposed use is compatible with all surrounding uses. And then you have the second criteria, the impacts of the use on surrounding areas have been adequately minimized. So again, the containers have been screened from the public right of way to the south, which would minimize the visual impact. Number three, the use will be consistent with the general purposes and intent to the code. Staff has determined it is consistent. Again, this application was a response to a code violation letter. So it's looking to be compliant with code. Number four, the use will comply with all applicable standards of this code. Staff has found that the application is, is in compliance. And then has also recommended conditions for the containers to meet applicable requirements for fire and building code. Which I'll get into in a moment. Number five, the use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and all other city plans and policies. So the use of comprehensive plan, but I did find two goals that touched on it. So you have direct development into a compact form. The application is taking, you know, an outdoor storage area consolidating into one specific area and then screening it. And then also to build up Glenwood Springs role as the regional good services, good services center. So auto repair stores serve the region. So the addition of these containers will allow Big O to continue offering its services to the region. And then again, the use minimizes adverse impacts to the health and welfare of the inhabitants of the surrounding area in the city. So again, we have the screening for the minimizing the visual impact. And then also adhering to applicable building code and fire codes will minimize adverse impacts to health, safety, and welfare. So that being said, we did receive comments from the fire department that requested that these three containers were approved as represented in the application with three containers sized at seven feet wide, seven feet tall, and forty feet long on each side of the property. The fire department requested that the containers observe the following conditions. So the first is that the containers would be vented. And this, these aren't mechanical vents. This is just a simple grate. And this is to allow airflow, which would provide a pressure release in case of a fire. Greg Bach from the fire department explained to me that this would just be a safer means to prevent explosion, actually. So if there were to be a fire, this would be a safety measure. Since he would, he requests that they'd be on each end of the container. So you'd have one on the doors, probably up high. And then on the opposite end of the container, you would have another vent opposite, which would be lower. So two vents per container. And then the second item that the fire department indicated was that each container be outfitted with what's called a dilute sprinkler system. So it's a little bit different than what you would see in a building. The pipes and sprinkler heads are kept empty, so they're not filled with water or pressurized air. And this system is designed that in case of a fire, the fire department would be able to connect to these systems and pump water through it to combat a fire. Because again, the fire department, the main concern here was that the, the storage containers would be used for the storage of tires. So these two measures would be to reduce any risk of fire and to minimize that. So there were no comments from any adjacent property owners. And so staff recommends approval with the conditions of action item one that are listed on page six of the staff report, which would include the two measures I just described from the fire department. So the sprinkler system and the venting. So I'll stop sharing my screen. So, thanks.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Emory. Any questions to staff from the commission at this point? Please raise your hand. We'll start with Commissioner Grosscap, please.
Okay. Thank you, Emory. I just have a question in the staff report in what I heard you just say. The application here is a result of a code violation letter and working with applicant to, to form compliance. But it says here that it was a violation as well to the property to the west. Accurate? So there are there two violations with different need for two different applications to.
So originally, Big O had a storage container on the mall property. If we go to, to the west, Big O utilizes that parking lot for their own parking. And there's actually a container placed there. So that is what that refers to, I believe.
Is that the B that you had on the diagram?
Correct. Yes. In the image, yes. That would be container B. That's actually on, not on the Big O Tire property.
So is that going to go away?
Yes, that will be removed.
Okay. The fence extends forty-four feet. So is it actually going? It's going longer than your little red line on the diagram, I'm assuming. Is that right?
Correct. The diagram's not entirely to scale. It would be from the southeast property corner, forty-four feet to basically screen that storage area from view from highway six.
Essentially the whole back of the building for B O, Big O Tires. Does that be about right?
I mean, indicate, indicated it would be from probably the corner to where the building sits. Because at that point, you're past where it would need to be screened.
I guess my question sort of is, is it just kind of a fence with nothing on the sides? Or does it have enough, forty-four feet is substantial? But it's just going to sort of be a standalone screen fence?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. That's six feet high.
Correct.
I guess I just wonder, is it kind of a magnet for graffiti or I don't know? I don't have any questions about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Thanks. Thank you, Emory. I am concerned that the screening fence does not appear as though it will screen the actual containers, in part because you tend to drive down that road looking off to the sides. And you're never really there looking at a right angle. So I think these containers would be quite visible from the southeast and from the southwest. I would suggest maybe adding fence around the sides to block the view as you come from the east. There seems to be a chain link enclosure around, I think what I saw was like electrical equipment there. And it had, it was a chain link fence with sort of fabric in it. Maybe the, the new fence could turn and go around that to further shield that utility equipment. It might be even more effective fence wise if the fence was closer to the containers. And you couldn't see behind it as you're traveling down the public right of way. I realize that that would mean that they would have to have doors for the tire people to get in there. But it doesn't seem to me as though a forty foot, forty-four foot long fence is going to be effective at screening these containers. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Steve, could you please make me co-host quick so I can lower the hands?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Marco, hang on just one sec.
No problem. I'm trying to keep track of who spoke and who didn't. Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Emory, thank you. I'm following up on Commissioner Sipperly. One of the criteria, I, I just questioned on the fence, and I know there's an issue obviously of expenses and, and mechanics. But we're screening the public right of way allegedly. But I think your criteria talked about surrounding areas. So do you mind explaining why we're not requiring screening on the east and also on the kind of main access road of the PUD on the north side? What, what determines the limitation on the screening? Because surrounding areas is different than the public right of way.
Sure. So that would be, the code requires it to be screened from the public right of way, which would be highway six and twenty-four. The roads interior to the mall are not public right of way. That's a private property. So they would not be required to be screened from that direction.
So surrounding areas is really much broader than the code requires.
Correct.
Okay. My next question. Just as a definition, when we talk about temporary structures or containers, are we talking about some kind of time temporal factor? Are we just talking about the nature of the containers themselves? Because I don't see any temporal restrictions here. So would you mind clarifying that?
Sure. So, and that's probably where in the staff report could have been a little more consistent with what we call them. You know, so storage containers, shipping containers, temporary storage containers. We're all referring to the same thing. And it is more the nature of them is that, you know, you can pick them up, move them around. So it's more to that than that being there for a specific period of time. These would be intended for a long-term use of storage. Which again, why the fire department had added those measures is because they're going to be there for, intended to be there for long term.
And the, the fire requirements, you mentioned the venting and the kind of the on-demand sprinkler system. Is that addressed in your condition four? Is that?
Yes, that, that's what that condition four would be is fire code and requirements to the fire department.
And my last question, and if it's irrelevant, let me know so we can save time. I know our next section has quite a bit of code revision and part of it has to do with temporary storage containers. Do you know, and maybe it's not worth the discussion, in this case, would this, if the new code adjustments were adapted, would this become an administrative decision? And/or I had some, there looked like some contradiction about sizes of temporary containers as well. So I was just wondering, even though this is a separate item, how the new code revisions would apply in this case?
Sure. And so that there would be a separate item, which I'm sure we'll have further discussion on in the next item. And as far as how anything that you would approve following relates to this, anything here would, if you approved the change that made this not conforming, and this would go forward as legal, not conforming. But again, in that next item, you'll probably be discussing those items and deciding what you'd like to do with that. Does that make sense?
So if it were adjust, if it were adapted, adopted, and this came after the fact, it would be a non-conforming use? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And I think too, in the next item, you'll just, you'll have plenty to discuss about what you'd like to see with that.
Thanks, Emory. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions to staff at this point? No? Thank you, commission. Would the applicant care to come forward and comment on your application? Maybe answer some questions? If you do, please state your name and address. No address, just names. State your name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Lori Mizushima, and I'm representing the ownership of Big O Tires for Glenwood.
Thank you.
And I, thank you. I did want to note that we have been in contact with the mall representative, Don Dyer. And she, they have asked if we would screen that south end of the property farther to the west than the forty-four feet, which as Emory had mentioned, only reaches that southwest corner, I'm sorry, southeast corner of the building. So we are in agreement. It's not something that was in our initial proposal because it hadn't come up prior. And all the city was requiring is that forty-four feet. But we would be willing to extend that fence out farther to the west that would actually reach the southwest corner of the building so that it would actually screen that whole south side of the building. So there would be less opportunity, as was mentioned prior, for visual on an angle approaching driving east or west. I'm not as familiar personally about that southeast corner and moving the fence around that. But it's something that we could, you know, consider looking at. Don did mention that they would like some sort of screening on the north side of the containers. And we're in agreement with her that we'd be happy to work on something that was agreeable to them as well, to provide some screening on the north side. So those are some things that we're, you know, willing to do that were outside of that initial city application or requirement that we're, you know, willing to do and want to be good, good neighbors.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any questions to the applicant from the commission? No questions? I guess I have a quick one. Were you guys, or did, did you guys ever think, I know it's, it's a, it's a cost issue, but did you guys think about maybe doing landscaping instead of a fence? Evergreens?
Well, that's not something we've talked about too much. I guess my thought was because it needs to be screened year round, there could be some concern with the landscaping not fully covering that south side. There's some trees and shrubs there already, but it doesn't fully cover that, you know, six feet height. And wintertime, those trees are pretty bare. So that's, that's something we could send, consider with evergreens. We hadn't though.
You haven't? Okay. Okay, any other questions? No? See none. Thank you very much. Anybody from the public like to come forward and comment on this planning item? Please raise your hand. I see nobody else here or raising a hand. So we'll close the public portion and we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion. Planning item fifty-nine twenty, consideration of a special use permit to allow accessory outdoor storage at five-one-zero-seven-nine highway twenty-four. And staff, I think, is recommending approval of this special use.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regarding planning item fifty-nine twenty. I move that we approve the special use permit as presented in the staff report with the findings and conditions on page six.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I can second. George?
And a second from Commissioner Shaver. Excellent. Any discussion? Please raise your hand. Jen?
I just would like to ask a, a quick question. I was thinking that we would not vote on this as we haven't been voting on the, the items. We've been holding them for a week. So I just was gonna, I apologize for just popping in. I was, I'm sorry, I was in a, a meeting. So I missed the, some of this item. But if Gretchen, could you remind me what we have done in the past? We've been trying to be very consistent.
Yeah. Sorry, Marco?
No, it's okay. I was just gonna say it's, no problem if we wanna, if we wanna continue this and let the public.
Sorry, oven going off, oven timer. Yeah, so I think we have been continuing these traditionally to the, another meeting. So to allow the public the, the greatest amount of time to comment about the application. So that's been consistent with what we've been doing.
So are you telling me we should keep doing this to be consistent?
Yes, I am.
Okay, excellent.
And then we will get with you all to see if there's a time before the next regular planning and zoning commission in late January where we can meet and decide on this application rather than having the applicants wait for another month. So we'll, again, we'll be in contact with you all.
Okay, I think, I think that'll work. I guess we have to have the motion and the second withdrawn at that point.
Withdrawn, the second. Withdrawn with a bit of reluctance since there's been no indication of public interest. Okay, in the issue of consistency, I will withdraw.
Thank you, Commissioner Schacter. I agree with you. So I guess I'm entertaining a motion to continue. Item, planning item fifty-nine twenty to the next possible yet to be determined meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion to continue and a second coming.
Second.
And a second. Excellent. So I guess there's no reason, not even reason to discuss anything. We'll just reconvene over this item as soon as we know when. Any, any additional questions?
We have to call the question.
I, I will. But I don't know if, is it all clear? Are we good? Okay. If it was cleared, then I'll call for the question. Oh, Emory?
Can, can I just, so to be clear, so for the applicant, basically, as we've presented it, discussed it, and you would like to continue it and hold on and to, to vote on the actual item, just for consistency, to give the public a chance to comment. Just that, that's clear?
That is absolutely correct. We, we usually give about ten days for additional comments to come in via email or phone calls or however staff is receiving them.
Okay. Thanks, Marco.
Yes, thanks, guys. So if we're all clear, then I'll, I'll call for the call, sorry, call for the question to continue.
Commissioner Whissing.
Prove.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner.
I think you called my name. Yes. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver? Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf?
Yes, and I am happy to go in between the two Ws for the future. Thank you.
Somebody needs to. Thank you. Motion passes.
Excellent. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, everybody. Thanks to the applicant and we'll see you probably in, well, two weeks, hopefully, or a little later. We'll figure it out. Thank you. Okay. So do we need to do the same thing to the next item? It's a code text amendment, not really, right?
It is a code text amendment and I just have a feeling that there's going to be some things that you pull out in order to discuss further. So if we could just see, you know, where we, where we land on all these things, but yeah, code text amendment, it would be the same, same process.
Actually, I think Gretchen, we have done, not to be confusing, but we've done all the text amendments, just voting and all of the location and extents just voting. So clear as mud. I apologize.
Okay, no, no, that's good. That's good.
Yeah, that's how we're gonna do it then. Sounds good to me. So next planning file is sixty-six dash twenty, consideration of various code text amendments to the municipal code title oh seven oh.
Okay, with permission. I'm going to share my screen here. So you should be seeing the, the proposed amendments in a spreadsheet. And this is obviously the latest round of several code revisions. This one corrects spelling and incorrect references or citations. But it also recommends new additions or clarifications, which will be the focus of my presentation. So in other words, I'm not going to focus on this first item that says we need to correct the spelling of appeal throughout the code. So I'm just gonna scroll through here. So my presentation is going to focus on clarifications to the outdoor storage review procedures, which you all touched on in the previous application. And then also the addition of proposed regulations for portable storage container requirements. In other words, the shipping containers. Some sign code clarifications. Obviously, we're, this one, this code revision deals with the adding the design variance criteria that you all reviewed in the past. And then renaming the construction plans review process, which has proved very confusing to both staff and our applicants. And then adding certain requirements related to small and large solar panel installation. So question, Marco, if you will, from the GECO, is that I've, I'm gonna go through these clarifications and additions. But do you want to, to be able to ask questions as I go, or do you want me just to, to roll through the presentation and then ask questions at the end?
Okay, if it was up to me, I would love to ask questions for each item.
Okay.
Instead of having a summary at the end and then having a million questions, trying to figure out where they fit.
That's fine. That's fine with me. All right, let's, let's get on here. So scrolling through, all right, the first one is outdoor storage. In the land use table, outdoor storage, as you had heard in the previous application, is a, is considered an accessory use, as you can see here. And it's a special review and I, I didn't include the, the categories here, but the, these are all the, the commercial zone districts and the industrial, industrial zone districts without, with the exception of the downtown area. So those outdoor storage comma accessory is a special review use. There are other code provisions, however, that address outdoor storage, such as in the landscaping section, which requires these outdoor storage areas to be screened when they're in the view of public rights of way and adjacent to residential uses or districts. So the question is, if outdoor storage is screened and meets all the other code requirements, such as setback, should we also then require the applicant to go through this special review process? It seems like a double penalty to staff. So in other words, we don't think so. So if the containers then don't meet the code requirements, there are other avenues, such as requesting a variance from the screening requirements or requesting a zoning variance for dealing with setbacks. So, so in other words, if they don't meet the code requirements, they will have to come back before you in order to request a variance. So this change, delete, actually deletes outdoor storage comma accessory from this land use table. So if I don't hear questions, then I'm, I'm just gonna continue going, if that's, that's okay?
Um, yeah, that's how I see it.
Okay.
Okay.
So you'll tell me then if, if people raise their hands, because I can't see that on my screen.
Correct. Correct. So commissioners, raise your hand if you have questions to the items Gretchen is presenting.
Okay. So.
Hey Gretchen?
Yes.
Catherine here. Is there any downside at all that you can think of for removing that? I mean, it, I can't think of one, but just do you?
No, not, not at this point, but we're gonna get into a deeper discussion, I think, about the, the shipping containers, portable storage containers and their, their use. Because that proposes to add a whole new section of regulations to this land use table. So in dealing with outdoor storage, I, I am really comfortable with saying that I don't see any downside to removing this as an accessory use from the code. Because we've got other sections of the code, like the landscaping, screening, fencing section that, that addresses the screening, which I think in my mind is, deals with the potential impact of outdoor storage on adjacent properties.
Unless it comes to the containers.
Yeah, well, yeah, the containers here, let's, let's chat about that right now. Okay, so the use of shipping or these Conex containers, as I said, is not currently addressed in the code. And we believe that they should be classified as outdoor storage and that they definitely need to be screened from public rights of way and adjacent residential uses or districts. We also believe that we need to review and regulate placement of these containers to assess if and how the containers affect things like onsite drainage, access, easements, setback, things of that nature. So the proposed regulations actually, first of all, they create an exception here for portable storage containers that are temporarily, temporarily used in construction projects. I mean, frequently, we'll have contractors want to put these on site in order to lock up their tools for the night, for example. So that, that's the exception. And then it's all tied, this exception is all tied to an active building permit. So then, moving on, these containers, there, we propose that they're allowed in all the commercial and industrial zoning districts. I don't even want to touch residential zone districts at this point. That's gonna be a discussion down the road, because it just, right now, I mean, it, it potentially could get in the weeds. So I wanted to separate the discussion of commercial versus residential use. So this just addresses commercial and industrial. This establishes location requirements down here. For example, we'd prefer that these be located not at the front of the building, but rather at the side or the rear of the principal building. That they, they cannot be located within circulation aisles, fire lanes, easement areas. They've got to maintain setback, the zone district setback requirements. And that they also cannot occupy required parking spaces, but they could occupy parking that's in excess of the, the minimum required by code. And that we also don't want them to occupy required landscape or common open space areas. So let's see, we've proposed that the containers be a maximum size of eight feet high by eight feet wide by sixteen feet long. And I expect this to be a discussion item based on what you all saw in the previous application. And we set a maximum size, lot coverage size for these containers of a thousand square feet. And based on the proposed size requirements, this would allow six containers. And then all, obviously then, that we would want the containers screened from the public right of way or residential uses or zoning districts. And then this define, then this references the landscape and screening requirements. So with that, I'm gonna take questions.
Thanks, Gretchen. Amber, please.
I don't hear her.
Sorry, it was me.
There you go.
So I think you answered my question, but I'm just wondering about the, the process and what makes me sort of think about something similar was when whoever took over the seven eleven building was like, had their dumpster and their construction shit stuff out for like their whole building permit process, which felt like two and a half years.
Yeah.
Do you feel like this is building enough provisions so that that, that wouldn't be the case? Or wouldn't be allowed?
Okay, so the downside of that, and thanks for bringing that up.
Or something similar. Do you see kind of my question?
Oops. Amber, say that again. I, I talked over you, sorry.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to see if that was, if that was clear in like my comparison about, from an example that I know that I saw.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and that's a good point, because someone can have an active building permit application for years as long as they show some progress towards achieving the, the certificate of occupancy. The only thing that, you know, if they don't have an inspection, then the permit can expire within a hundred and, a hundred and eighty days of, of the last inspection. So that is a downside, actually, but this is the only way that I could see to tie the exception to a building permit. So, but Amber, you do bring up a good point that that, that would be a downside at the, the, technically, the storage container could be on site for as long as they're actively working on a, a building.
Well, that said, when the hospital, the hospital was under construction, they had the storage containers out back for years. So I think that's just the nature of the beast, isn't it?
Yeah, and you know, the last time I was through the meadows, I noticed that there's still storage containers out there around where the Marshalls and Vitamin Cottage were working.
And since they're construction containers, they can do that without screening?
Well, I think that the, so my example is, so we've issued a CO for the two that I just mentioned in the meadows. So I think that's an enforcement issue at this point. The hospital, Marco, is a different deal. You're, you're correct. I mean, the hospital, boy, I mean, we've got active building application, building permit applications for them frequently.
Right.
So yeah, you're right, nature of the beast.
Nature of the beast, I think. But anyway, George, please.
Yeah, I would think under normal circumstances, usually, construction, whoever's doing construction wants to get it done and get, get it all, get on with things, but, and I think this makes sense as tying it on to something else. I mean, I don't know how else you do that. Does it make any sense to consider a time limit, though, in, under certain circumstances that would preclude a long-term thing like at the seven eleven?
I would be open to suggestions for sure.
The other comment was about your, so you're saying you can't have a container bigger than eight by sixteen, is that?
Well, that is, so let's talk about size for a minute. That, that was just my initial proposal for sizes. And the reason why I picked a maximum of a thousand square feet is because it was consistent with the accessory building size limits, which I'm not sure is actually applicable anymore, because you'll notice later in this chart, I proposed getting rid of that. So I'm, I don't know that this makes a whole lot of sense at this point either. It was just a number to land on. So again, I would be open to other size suggestions.
You know, I could see making a square footage maximum. But to try to define what size the container, I, you know, I think I'd rather see two seven by forties than four, you know, eight by sixteens, if that's the way the math works out.
That does, that makes perfect sense to me. To set a, a, cannot exceed a certain square footage. Sorry.
The last comment I have is, so you're addressing this Gretchen on commercial and industrial. In the future, there will be, it would be addressed for, say, residential construction purposes, is that?
Yeah, perhaps. I hate, I hate even to say this right now, but in Glenwood Springs, I don't see long-term use of these storage containers as an issue. But in other communities, it definitely is. So I, I think that in the future, we'll probably have to address the use of these containers in residential areas. And so that's why I wanted to separate it at this point, because it certainly has become a growing issue in our commercial zone districts right now. For example, we had to do an enforcement action on Lowe's and they promptly, promptly moved their containers from their front parking lot to the, to behind the building. And others, Lowe's, Lowe's wasn't just the only one.
Well, I can say from personal experience that they can be very useful in, in residential construction, particularly, the way I've used them is in remodeling scenarios where it gave an opportunity to, for the owner to store or some of their belongings as well as our construction materials that we couldn't store inside the building as it was under construction. So it was, it was very efficient from that standpoint.
Yes, and I've, I've also been told that it's helpful when, when people move, they often have the pods on site. And so it makes their, their move a little bit easier and more secure, for sure. So Marco, I apologize, but I forgot to mention that, that at the conclusion of my presentation here, if you all wanted to pull out certain of these items to discuss, that's why I've included the numbers on the, the far left side of the screen. Each, each item is numbered, so you just pull them out by number. Move forward for the rest of them that are relatively easy, pull out the ones that you want to discuss for the future.
That, that sounds good. Well, let's, let's see, we have a, Carolyn wants to chime in next and we'll see. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Gretchen. I am also in favor of keeping a square footage limit, but I'm with George in that it seems silly. You could put, you know, six, sixteen foot containers, why not just put a few forty footers, as we saw there at Big O? I also agree with the value of the construction containers. Perhaps in a separate meeting, we could limit those further. Uh, in a separate meeting, we could limit those further. Terms of duration, if they're there for more than a year, maybe you've got to screen them. Or if they're in the front of the building as opposed to hidden in the back, then maybe they would come up. Um, having to meet some additional. Um, restrictions or 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 screening requirements, so but that that could be moved into the construction storage department. Um, requiring screening only from adjacent residential uses has me a little bit concerned. Because like a lodging use is not a residential use and you could have a three or four story hotel. And then a bunch of containers with a six foot fence around it and you're just looking right down at them. So I'm wondering if we might ought to consider um other uses. That would be sensitive to having containers screened. Like the hot springs pools and stuff, you don't want. A bunch of containers parked right there, you know. But those are my thoughts on this item five.
Thank you. Uh, any other, any other comments? I just have a quick question Gretchen, if if, let's say I was the mall and I want to put. Six eight by sixteens or three seven by twenties in the middle of the parking lot. Just so I have outdoor storage. How, do I have to screen those in the middle of the parking lot? If I want to do that? And I mean, all all I have is a temporary chain link fence unless I'm going to rip up my pavement.
Right, and you know, chain link doesn't provide a whole lot of screening.
And I don't know what's worth to look at. Is it chain link with a green? Or is it the maybe an extra painted container? I don't know.
It would have to, we don't allow chain link with those slats or the fabric to be um to be used for screening. But so if the. That's another good point. With the mall, they've got what twelve hundred parking spaces and they need maybe half of that or a little more than half of that. Um, to meet their parking requirement. So if the the storage containers were in view of highway six. Then they would have to screen, but if not, then.
You can screen at the highway because you can see over it. You 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 can screen in the middle of the parking. I mean, you could.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Well, that's a good point.
Um, and I'm, I I just. You know. Pick them all. I guess the meadows would be the same issue. I guess even maybe city market. Or the old Safeway, if there was outdoor storage in the middle of the parking lot, what's the deal?
All right, well, I will, I'll look at the screening, the screening language. And propose some revisions.
And I mean, what what is it? Is it likely that that'll happen? I don't know. Can we ask them to put it behind the building? Probably.
Well, I think based on the fact that there are these Conex containers at the meadows now. Um, yeah.
Why didn't they put them behind their buildings because of deliveries and because of deliveries?
Yeah, I don't know what they're being used for right now. So if they're even, if they're even there, I haven't been out to the meadows in quite a while, so.
Which it, which brings me to the next point, which is screening. Is is this a good time to talk about the screening or would it be under landscaping? That that more make more sense?
I don't think I proposed changing the screening requirements, so you might as well hit me with it now.
Okay, uh, it no- nothing big and I'm I might be the only one feeling that way, but. I'm not big on six foot wooden fences to screen anything. Um, because to be honest, looking at a wooden slatted fence is. Not much nicer than looking at no fence at all. Um, I I would prefer a fence landscaping combination.
Okay.
I would prefer that we have some grasses or bushes or evergreens in front of that fence to break up that cedar look. Because it's all going to be cedar and it's all going to be six inches wide slats. And that's how we do the screening fences, which is to me, n- nothing nice to look at. And that's just me, but that's how I feel. About this, I I prefer, I know landscaping is more expensive, I understand, but if. You 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 know, they do this new stuff where they put the, what we did at the recycle center where slats inside outside.
Right.
They're only looking at a heap of wood. It's just not that nice. Nicer if you had some bushes in front of it or some grasses or something to break up that cedar look.
So the only, so I'll say two things about that. Um, the meadows actually has heightened uh i- increased. Standards that require some landscaping with fencing. Because usually their standards require the the CMU block as, I mean, you'll see all their dumpsters behind the CMU block enclosure. So the other thing too is that the um. Just to be, just to consider this, is that this this increases the cost for the applicant because. In this environment, you add landscaping, you're going to have to irrigate if you want it to survive. So just just be aware of that part of it.
Completely understand, but um, three forty foot containers. Is still less money even with a fence and landscaping than adding on to your building to do permanent storage.
True, that is true.
So why not make it? The best looking we can, in 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 my opinion. That's why. As far as I'm concerned, you can keep the fence off and just put some evergreens in. To to screen.
If it's that much of a conundrum, why are we allowing them at all?
There you go, add on to your building, start digging. It's just, just a thought, that's all.
Unfortunately, they're a thing and uh. I think if we didn't allow them, they would be present um at a lot of places regardless. Okay.
All right, good thoughts.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, that six foot wooden fence, okay, let's screen it. But it's like, we're putting up a fence to hide something with something that doesn't really look that much better. And I'm being redundant, sorry, so. Let's move on.
Okay, uh, let's see, nonconformities, uh, what is this about? Got this flagged here. Oh, um, this addresses the the roof, so um proposing to add um. Regulations for um small scale and large scale solar energy systems. So this is the first proposed um requirement here. That um. Currently, the land use code does not address either small or large scale solar energy installations. And this would be something like a roof mounted unit, solar unit, or actually like the the field of. Um, solar units that you see in some communities. So we, what we've done here um throughout the code is add definitions for these types of uses. We've added the uses to the land use table, um which you see here. Right here. And um, we propose that the large scale systems, in other words, the the ones that cover. Large areas are classified under the industrial heading. And our special review in commercial and industrial zone districts. The small scale systems, we are, we're considering as a um. As a permitted use in all zoning districts, because like I said, these are, these are folks's roof mounted units or even the standalone. Um, um, panel units that you see. And also then. Excuse me, that this clarifies the um. That where there is a nonconforming building height situation. That solar panels can be added um to a maximum of five feet. So in other words, the the noncon. If you have a nonconforming building height, you are not precluded from adding a solar panel to to your roof. That's what that does. So um, if you don't have any questions about this, I'll I'll move on.
I think we have a couple, hang on.
I'm wondering what where the ten kilowatt cutoff came from. Um. Ten is, I guess, from what I understand, fairly low uh in terms of powering a whole house. A lot of. High usage houses would need more than ten. So basically, you, we would be telling people they just, they would have to go through a review. Process to put enough panels on the roof to power their own house. Um, and that also brings me to a lot of developments in the field of solar technology, like now they have these roof shingles. That are solar panels and logically you'd put them all over your roof, but with this ten kilowatt cutoff. Now using those shingles would push you to a special um, special review.
Hey, would you know what a house requires?
Do I?
Yeah, would you know what what the next step up is from ten kilowatts?
You can figure it from the energy records, but I I actually contacted a person who designed systems and said, would a ten kilowatt? System power my house? And she said, probably, probably would. But I don't use very much energy. So I'm, I is that, is the ten kilowatt an arbitrary number? I mean, I'm I'm very glad that um. A small scale system won't require review, but at what point? And for what reason do we limit the size of the system?
Okay, um, my disclaimer here is that these. Standards in these definitions were given to us by the folks at Clear who reviewed our code and. And um requested certain revisions. So if um Jen is on still on the line. She might add some clarity because she'd been working directly with these folks. And that's where the the ten kilowatt cutoff came. So if I gather what you're saying, Carolyn, is that even though you your home, your own home would use the ten kilowatt. Then you wouldn't be adding. Um, you wouldn't be able to add more to the grid, for example, is that, is that, okay, all right, yep, so.
So if I might actually, um, so we have um been asked to. To pursue the soul smart um designation and one of the criteria. Um, to get to kind of the silver or gold level, I don't know if we can get to the gold at this point, but to get to the silver level of this. Uh, designation, there's a requirement that you call out. Um, the um accessory. PV as a as a use by right for accessory um use and for small scale, basically. Um, so, so we've been, so there are a bunch of other recommendations that are related to solar panels and it was. Some of that came out of that review that we had from the soul smart folks and from um, from our consultant help. Uh, our folks at Clear, so. The definition of the solar system where it is is actually um a recommendation from Doug Hazard. In our electric department. Um. So he added net meter to the residential and commercial. Um, we do allow customers to go over the max, but. We're not required by law to net meter, so we have a different interconnection agreement for those customers wishing to obtain. Net zero, so this is um essentially related to the request from the electric department. Um, because of our, just the way that our agreement is with mean. Um, and I, I said Matt didn't have to come, but now I'm out of my element, so I wish he was here, but e- essentially the the the. Um, the small scale cutoff was related to the net metering piece. And it was a request from the electric superintendent.
Does net metering mean feeding back or going down to zero and not using any electricity off the grid or how, what does that mean?
It um is, it's about the intercorrect connection agreement. It's about like how much we pay, I think, for the the power. Um, and. Commercial customers who wish to pursue a system over twenty five kilowatts can contact me and possibly enter into a purchase power agreement with them. Um, so it's about kind of the agreement that we have with mean. Um, and it's the the net metering pieces, the way that the the cost piece works.
One could presume that if a household were to put solar panels on the roof, then the city of Glenwood Electric. Supply would be losing money and it might be to their benefit to limit the size of these systems. What do we do about that?
That's what this is related to, I think. So it's, there's a, this net metering piece is, that was the request from the the um electric department. So the use by right piece is the request from. The soul smart and from Clear, this net like the. Um, the piece related to the size is a request from the electric department.
That that does make sense. I do have a comment about that, but we're going to have Sumner first.
Uh, thank you Gretchen. Um, in my understanding that a nonconforming height. Um, for a small system, we, nonconforming, I assume is generally too tall. Um, I would be very hesitant to allow an additional five feet. Um, for a variety of reasons in in any building that's already too tall. And most solar residential solar systems I've seen. Probably now as well as in the future, like Carolyn mentioned, the shingles aren't going to add um vertical height. So I'm a little leery of seeing that nonconforming be able to boost by another five feet, if I understand you correctly.
That is correct, that is the proposal, so um to clarify. Or to add on with with what you just said, that say you bust the zone district height limit by ten feet. This would allow you an extra five feet to work with in order to install uh panels on your roof. That you wouldn't otherwise be allowed to do because you exceeded your height limit to begin with.
Well. Le- I'm still confused, or if I'm, if I'm, let's say I'm forty. Let's say I'm in a residential area and I'm exceeding the height requirement, I have a nonconforming home or use. And I want to put panels on, they're not going to add height. They're not going to increase the height, are you saying? I need permission because I'm nonconforming?
Yeah, they they would though, because they add a bulk on top of your roof that doesn't already comply with the the zoning requirements.
Unless they lay flat to the slope of your roof.
They they add, I mean, the shingles, I don't, the shingles, Carolyn's example of the the shingles, I don't know about because I don't know the product. Um, so that probably if there's no bulk to them, no width.
I think Gretchen, are you thinking of those panels that you need to stand up on an angle with with a leg behind it and then pointing towards the sun?
Yep, I am.
I don't see, I don't see many of those on residential, but I'm still. Gretchen, maybe if I, first of all, most of the residential panels I see. Don't raise the peak of the roof at all, um, residentially. I'm not saying they don't exist, but again. Five feet, um, particularly in a neighbor, I mean. What considerations are there for the neighbor's visual access or the neighbor's solar access? I I'm reluctant. Um, to put a five foot allowance, um, because I see plenty of other solutions on small solar residentials. That don't add peak height, so uh again, that's my concern.
Well, all right, that's fair enough. We can uh check into that one.
Sumner, would you, oh, would you be in favor of a smaller number? Um. Because I think if you need the height um at the midpoint of the peaked roof. You wouldn't be able to put solar panels on at all.
Well, and I guess Jen, I would, I would want some more, somebody give us some more technical input as to, again, I'm. I'm I'm not totally up to speed on how we measure that. That roof height, um, if it's the peak alone. Um, then I, then I don't understand why we would give them five feet, but I definitely take a look at it very carefully as to. How much allowance, if any, is required.
It's the midpoint of a peaked roof.
Right.
Um, so it, so it would measure to the midpoint, so if if they exceed already. They couldn't do anything more um to add any height and, you know, there are potentially. Flat roofs that would be nonconforming where people wouldn't be able to have then um a solar panel. If it was nonconforming.
Well, then I I guess I need somebody, if we're talking about. They can add five feet, but does not. but does not, for example, exceed the, the peak of the roof, I would have no problem with that. If it's a flat roof, um, that's non-conforming, which is pretty unusual in a residential area. But nevertheless, if that has no visual or shading impact on neighbors, which is possible on a flat roof, um, those are things I, I think I'd want to have addressed or at least explained before we approve that.
I think we could also say if a sloped or, or sloped roof application is possible, that's what should happen. So you don't go past your, um, ridge height of your roof or whatever. The, the other thing I just want to pick back up again is that 10 kilowatt that, that, um, I guess defines small system. Used by right, shouldn't, shouldn't we have, I don't know, I'm just saying this, shouldn't we have the right to power our house to what we need? So shouldn't that instead of say 10 kilowatts, shouldn't it say, um, whatever system is necessary to power your house without feeding back into the system? So that's your at, at zero, basically. Isn't that what the definition should be of your small system?
Should be, but the utility companies don't want it. Their interest conflicts with ours.
I understand, but either we try to go green or we don't.
I agree.
Oh, huh? I just, just a thought.
Well, but Marco, I guess, um, you wouldn't want sort of, you know, there's sort of a maximum retail or, or real estate amount you have on your roof. So, you know, if you were trying to fill, I don't know, your shed with solar panel and all angles of your roof and maybe a few on your, uh, so I guess I'm, I'm thinking we try this 10 kilowatts. I think, I don't know. I mean, Carolyn might be right that it's a little bit conservative, but I see often in multifamily, things like 30 to 50. So 10 for a single family home, I guess my reaction is that's seeming generous, but I don't have the technical numbers.
How many, how many kilowatts do you think it is for a, a single family home, Catherine?
I'm saying what I see able to be put on with the technology of the panels. So that's basically looking at space and what you can kind of.
Right, but, but, but therein is also lies the factor of, does your house, i- is your ridge line of, of the roof, north, south, west, east, y- you know, my instance, I've been flat out told, don't put solar panels on. You don't get anything out of it unless you can stand them up with the feet behind it pointing south. So yes, I understand. You don't want to, you don't want to add the shed to it. And you don't want to add everything you can to it to get, to get your house powered. But at least I think you should have the capability to put on what you can on your roof to get as much as possible out of it. That's just my thought.
And I, I guess it isn't saying that you can, it just would require a special use review, right? I mean, well, I guess we don't have it in those other residential zones. Maybe we can make it a special use review in every zone.
Right, but that's where the use by right thing comes in. Should, should it be a special use or should we just be able to do that to power our houses? Because I'm pretty sure 10 kilowatts is not enough for some of the larger homes. That'd be my take on this, but.
So, and I think what Doug is saying is that we do allow customers to go over the max, but then we are not required by law to net meter. So we have a different interconnect agreement for those customers wishing to obtain net zero, but exceed the maximum. So.
That means that you, you are not required by law to buy it back. If people go bigger than 10 kilowatts, is that what I'm gathering out of this? So if they produce more than they use, it's just produced with anybody else. It, it's not feeding back into the grid because you're not required to, to take it.
It's the, it's the net, um, I think it's the billing piece of it. So net metering is a solar incentive that allows you to store energy in the electric grid. When your solar panels produce more electricity than you need, that energy is sent to the grid in exchange for credits. So that's the piece that's different.
That's the piece that's different. Yeah.
And I'm a little out of my element.
Me too. I, I, I understand roof slopes and I understand solar panels and, and the way the sun travels or, or we travel towards the sun. I understand that, but that's about it. Anyway, I just think we should have the capability of powering our own homes to what we need.
There's one other thing, um, written in the explanation here, uh, that I see. It is this recommendation also includes adding a requirement that 20% of the parcel be landscaped. Is that for small scale too? Because it's not really clear how it's written.
No, that's just for large scale installations.
Okay. We should make that clear because I mean, what if you put the panels on the roof, then it's going to be hard to landscape and hide them.
So it's, it's hard to see that in the, the way that I've, um, ordered the, the proposed changes. But you'll see that number five here, right here, it says is for large scale.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So there's no screening requirement for small scale?
No, large scale Gretchen, I think my intent when I gave that to you, um, this is a collaborative project, um, was for the ground mounted.
Yes, ground, yes, definitely ground mounted. Oh, so maybe I should make that clarification.
Sounds good. Thank you. And George, please.
Well, I wonder if, does it make any sense for this to be a, um, permitted through a staff review that could answer some of these questions? Cause there's so many different possibilities that can exist in, um, how these things are installed and what kind of building it is and what the surroundings are and, and what the energy requirements of the building might be. You know, I can make, I can certainly appreciate Carolyn's thoughts about limiting it and Marco and, um, but I also understand, you know, I think Doug Hazard's concerned that he's going to be, people are going to be putting on these panels all over the place, which by the way, we live in a canyon. So it's, you know, Glenwood Springs by and large, with some exceptions in the, in certain parts of the town. But by and large, the city is not ideal, um, solar territory because of our, the fact that our sun comes up late and goes down early. But, you know, I think Doug Hazard's concern is he's going to have the systems feeding back into his system. And he's got a lot of infrastructure that doesn't get covered when you're doing a net metering scenario. But that all being said, I, I wonder if it would make sense to have some of this done through a staff review where, um, the particulars of the installation can be reviewed and compared to, um, you know, standards that, that, that we set up or, or are established in some form.
I, I agree, George. I think this may need a little more homework. Um, to, to figure out what is what exactly.
Fair enough. I mean, we can, well, we can pull this out for further discussion and clarification and technical information. No problem.
I have one suggestion that I'd like to run by you is that you could make, um, a large scale system that is, and I'm speaking out loud here, you know, um, roof mounted a P in all of the resi, a large scale one, a P in all of the residential zones, if it, and maybe you just have an, you know, two kind of tiers, like large scale, roof mounted, large scale, ground mounted. Because I do think that this is also intended, not that I think we have a lot of places where this could potentially happen, but where you, you could have a solar farm. Um, so I don't, didn't want to exclude that as a, as an option.
So you're saying the large scale solar roof mounted versus ground mounted? I'm, I'm creating two, two categories here. And then the roof mount is a P in all the zone districts.
But then they would still have to have the approval from MEAN or from Doug, the other piece of that, if that makes sense. All right. Well, yeah, we can circle back. It's just if, if, if that seems like something that you guys would all be in favor of. We can, we'll pull this one out and bring it back.
Yeah, no, clearly I need to educate myself because like, like Jen, I am, um, beyond her. I'm way out of my element here. So, okay. All right. So, um, we'll take that into consideration and bring, bring this back for additional consideration.
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, moving on, screaming through these, um, accessory uses, accessory structures, actually. Uh, currently the code sets a thousand square foot maximum of all accessory structures on a property. And this is regardless of the size of the property. So we recommend eliminating this requirement entirely as there are other sections of the, the code that address lot coverage. Um, it seems to be, um, problematic. Um, because like I said, it, it doesn't differentiate between a, a property that's maybe 5,000 square feet versus one that's 20,000 square feet. So, uh, this is actually a holdover from the, the old code. And, um, it's proving to be kind of problematic at this point and actually easily overlooked, to be honest with you. All right. The next one I want to highlight is off-street parking and loading. We, in the code right now, we've got this table that is, um, design requirements for parking spaces and drive aisles. And then it also has this, um, handy, uh, diagram of how those are mentioned or are dimensioned. This is also covered in the engineering design standards and we're trying to not duplicate the information. So if you recall, when we, we approved this, um, code back in 2018, we tried to pull out all the engineering related information and put those in the engineering, engineering standards. This is something that, that, um, we actually accidentally kept in the code. And so I would like to pull it out because word for word, it is in the engineering standards and I only, really only want it in one place. All right, parking alternatives. If you all recall, this section allows the director to approve certain parking alternatives to providing the required onsite parking. For example, somebody can, um, have offsite parking if it's within certain feet of their development or they can get credit for being located near a, an active bus stop or they can get credit for having more bike parking than it, that it's over and above the code requirement. Or they can, um, have, get credit, one for one credit for having, um, on-street parking. Um, this actually, we've run into some problems recently where people, where developers automatically assume that, that we can apply this. So this change, oh, I, I, let me back up and say that the maximum allowed reduction is 30% of the, the, um, requirement for onsite parking. So that, that caps the amount of, of credit that we can provide. This change clarifies that the applicant needs to actually apply for the reduction. They're not automatic. They need to give us a narrative as to how and what they're going to do to, to offset their onsite requirement. And it also adds clarification to the on-street parking reduction, which allows the director to consider the existing demand or the pressure that's, um, that is there for available parking. For example, say, um, in some blocks of Blake or some blocks of Colorado, the, the street is basically part full. And so this allows the director to say, no, you know, I don't think then the park, that the, that the on-street parking is actually there and available for your use. So we're not going to approve this. I'll take questions. Nope.
Well, I don't have a question. Well, I do have a question. George first. Go.
Um, are you referring to areas that are in the, the, the central core on Blake and Color?
Uh, no, well, outside of the GID, where parking.
Yes, correct.
Yes, yes, I am, I am. And, and other areas of town too, where parking is at a premium. This allows Jen, the director, to, um, disallow the, uh, parking, on, on-street parking. Um, it, it, it really just gives her some, some parameters to deal with because right now, the way the code is written, written, it just, developers sort of assume that, that they get that per 30% cap or reduction rather.
Okay. Yeah. I was just concerned that it was, um, there wasn't a conflict with the GID, but.
No, yeah, no.
Otherwise I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I just have a smarty pants comment. Is this the, is this a good area to add no more surface parking lots in the GID?
No.
This wasn't the spot. We need to find that spot somewhere.
Uh, it might be in the land use table.
Let, let's put permeable surfaces with that.
I forgot about that, Carolyn. I'm sorry. Forgot about that one. All right. So moving on, um, to Sumner's favorite topic signage. So we propose three changes to the sign code. The first one is that the old code did not require a permit for, um, signs that are in windows. Somehow this was inadvertently dropped, um, when we adopted the new code. So I'm proposing to add it back in for signs because basically I don't want to have to calculate uh, sign requirements for, uh, window signs. And the only caveat is that they don't contain these flashing lights that are visible from the public street. Did I hear a question?
No, I just, I just read it again and it's clear now. Good. Thank you Gretchen.
Sure. Um, I have a quick one though. Can, can you have window signs as big as you want, anywhere you want?
You know, um, people do those wraps and the answer is yes, they would have been allowed under the old code. And, but so here's the difference though. I'm going to back up a second. Is that in the, um, site, no, i- in the, uh, commercial design standards or the non-residential design standards, there's, there's a transparency requirement. Um, I can't remember the percentage right now. I want to say in the downtown, it's like 60%. And in other areas, it might be 30, which has proven to be huge. So if somebody came in to wrap an entire window, I would point out that transparency requirement to them. I'm not saying that, that we haven't caught it in all instances because I have quite frankly, seen total window coverage. But that's a, that's a good point. I'm not sure how to address that though, other than trying to catch it at a staff level.
I like the transparency thing.
Yeah. So maybe.
Square footage percentage.
Right.
Overall glass, you know?
Okay. So, yeah. So maybe what I say is subject to compliance with yada, yada section of the, the non-residential standards for transparency. Okay. Make a note.
And I'll go read it.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I'm making a note. Okay. Um, and then finally, let's see. Oh, this one. There are, this is not finally, this is just the second one. There are confusing requirements related to yard signs. This simply. This simply eliminates the term temporary yard signs from the code because it's proven to be quite a secular. Or circular um issue. I mean, you've got exemptions for yard signs here, and it it just it it creates this endless loop. And so we're we're have eliminated the loop by just simply eliminating the word temporary yard signs from the code. And then finally.
Well, are we all in violation for having our Don't Mind Glenwood signs out front for longer than ninety days?
No.
Okay, good.
Um.
My one comment I would like to make on that is um I can can somebody explain to me what the um. Reasoning for allowing a sign to be up for forty-five days after the event?
Oh, this is a holdover from um. So if the sign code, our sign code was illegal based on the um Supreme Court's finding in in the Gilbert, Arizona case. And so what we had to do was a complete overhaul. Of our sign code and this forty-five days, I think, related to political signs. Well, we can't use the word political signs, and so they're considered an event. Um and that's that's what that's about. I don't, George, I know that I didn't answer your question, George.
Well, that's. That's okay, but so. There was something that came out of the Supreme Court decision that.
Yeah.
That indicated that you should have to allow for that length of time.
No, no, that not the length of time, but but this is a holdover from the old code that I think had to address political signs. So in other words, the city doesn't want to see. Political signs up for um, you know, forty-five days after the election. And I think that that's what that that is. This is a holdover from from that.
Can we do less?
Can you? I heard, can you do less? Uh, sure.
And I think Anna had her hand up, so.
I was just going to, I I don't actually even think it's relevant. I was just going to say that it can't be content based, so there can't be like one set of regulations for political signs and one set for different kinds of signs. But I don't think that's relevant. I think, George, your just question is, it can be shorter than forty-five days. Like, why do you have to keep it up for forty-five days after the election? Other than just to rub it in someone's face if you won?
Or you lost.
Um, why do you want to rub it if you lost?
And so the answer is yes, it can be less than forty-five days.
In in section two B, also, you might want to reword reads strange temporary signs shall be limited to three times per year.
Per calendar year, per property for single tenant properties.
Well. Signs can't be limited to three times, right? Just.
So how we how we do that is that each temporary sign is allowed these so-called forty-five day periods, so.
Oh, I see.
Uh, yeah, it's forty-five times three, and which is a hundred and thirty. Thirty-five, right?
So where do our Don't Mind Glenwood signs fall in temporary sign standards?
Hmm.
I mean, there's definitely there for longer than ninety days.
Yeah, that's a.
I don't have a permit.
That called a personal uh.
Maybe the event has not.
Same thing, same thing with take a limit signs.
The. Right, exactly, yeah. Um the forty-five days prior to the start of an event, like. There there isn't actually an event.
Right, there is. Then maybe it doesn't even fall into that category, and there's no time limitation.
Yeah, I'm getting to the sign code here. That Gilbert has made um our sign code really difficult.
It's supposed to make it easier. I mean, it's supposed to make it simpler, but.
Whatever.
I I don't, hey.
Yeah, I mean, I remember a meeting where Carl was talking to city council. It was during the code adoption process, and Carl Hanlon said, yeah, you're gonna hate it. Speaking about our sign code, you're gonna hate the changes. So. Well, let's see.
It's a First Amendment thing.
Yeah, it is First Amendment. Residential zoning districts. Yeah, so there is a time limit, actually, for yard signs. Says shall not be displayed. For a period more than ninety days per calendar year. For in residential zoning districts.
Shame.
Put it in your window, won't matter.
I'll run out of room. I got all three signs out there. Okay, well, that was kind of for my own um interest, but uh.
You asked.
Uh we clearly do all break that um regulation.
True, and you notice the city is not enforcing it either. And I don't see a time where we're actually going to be.
Yeah.
So are you guys okay with the forty-five days before and after?
It's sort of strange to have that long after an event.
Yeah.
I I don't really care.
I mean, my, all I can say is the forty-five days is a holdover from the new code.
I'm just asking, I'm just curious. To to me, it seems it could be shorter.
I don't think I'm gonna lose sleep over it.
Not this time of the year.
Okay. I'm just gonna cruise cruise on here, and if you guys want to pull this one out um for further consideration, we can. All right, then the last sign um. Proposed amendment deals with. Um. At non-residential uses and residential zoning district districts. The amount of signage actually is quite limited, and I've I've copied a section of the sign code here, so you can see that that for non-residential uses. In residential zone districts. You're allowed a maximum of sign area of ten square feet. And then the height is forty-two inches. Um and then the there's a setback limitation. So. This is particularly problematic. In the residential transitional zone. Which includes Valley View Hospital. And it includes properties between, say, I think it's Fourteenth and. Eleventh Street, I want to say. Where there are a lot of commercial office-related type uses. So, for example, with Valley View being in an RT residential transitional zone. Every time they want to change a sign, they have to come through and get a variance from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we uh are rec- me, I am recommending that. You all consider exempting properties in the residential transitional zone from from this particular uh regulation. So in other words, the hospital then. Would have to comply with the regular sign code um limitations for for signage, based on their frontages and um. And setbacks and whatnot.
I have a question on that, Gretchen.
Yes.
On on your recommendation to. I guess, remove in the residential transit. It must have been put in for a reason.
Well. It's been in the sign code for a long time. Um.
So it's almost like your argument is that the rest of the code is caught up, and so we no longer need this specificity for this own district?
Well, I think the intention was the the residential transition transitional zone. Like like it said, is is to be a transition between the the residential zone district and the heavier commercial uses. So the sign. Sign code wanted to limit it, limit the. Square footages of signage allowed, but um along Grand Avenue in particular, and then, I mean, Valley View is its own issue. But um. There have been a lot of conversions of of the residential properties to offices. And ten square feet is pretty small when you're when you're talking about signage. So um. Valley View. Could be rezoned to a um institutional use, which we've put into the code when we did the revisions in or the new adoption in twenty eighteen. But that's a a pretty long process for them to go through. I wanted to address not only the the issue with Valley View, but also the issue with. Sign limitations in all of the the RT districts. So um I'm not sure that that really answers your question, to be honest, Catherine. I just personally, I I think that that um. The areas, the RT zone areas have changed in character. So much so that um. That I I'd like the sign code to catch up like like you had suggested. And I'd be happy to come back and show you what the RT zones look like, and you can consider this further.
I don't, I don't think I have. A big, I was. I like the idea of being consistent.
Well, um, yeah, let me know if you want, um because I can certainly show you a map of the RT zones and let you consider what the potential impacts would be. Be happy to do that.
I think Sumner had something to say.
Of course. Um, well, I think Gretchen knows that I'd have. Sign, almost no signs at all, but. But my concern, my concern here, Gretchen, one thing we're not considering, take, take, for example, your example of Grand Avenue from Eleventh to Fourteenth. While the uses have changed. The structures and architecture and visual impact of that has not changed, and it is a transition. Because of residents behind it, but it's also a transition from our historic DDA to. Our extremely commercial south end. So that's one of the reasons why I'd be concerned about turning them loose. With full bore commercial signage. Um again. You know, in this day and age. It's not hard to find, there's very little evidence I've seen that you need a sign to find a business. So from that end, uh in terms of transition of grand, I'd be concerned, and. The hospital is a different animal in a sense, but. Um. Again, maybe rezoning it is a better solution because there are, you know, they bought almost every neighbor they can think of, but again, I'd hate to see. Unfettered large signs. Anywhere in a in in something that by definition is partially residential.
Okay. Appreciate those comments.
Can I jump in? And uh I I I'm kind of with Sumner on this. If we remove the ten-square-foot limit. On sign sizes in that zone district, is there any limit remaining?
Yep, they they are limited to their uh what's called a linear frontage, and that's the. The amount of building frontage that they have on a street. So if you have a a thirty-foot frontage, then you get one square foot of signage per. Linear frontage, so it's thirty. But. And that being said, I I take to heart what's what Sumner is saying about the preservation of the the transitional district, so. Um, I might actually ask you all to to pull this one out for, or yeah, seventeen out for further. Consideration.
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right, um. Let's see. Oh, construction plans review. Like I said in my opening intro. This actually, this term, construction plans review, has proved confusing. Now, if you all recall, when we adopted the new code, you all are seeing um. Uh less detail in the plans that you review. And uh what we're what we've done then is we created this intermediary step called um construction plans review. This is a step. Before the applicant can actually pull their building permit. So this ensures that the the plans that were approved. And the technical information that wasn't provided to you. Um is provided at this intermediary level to ensure the compliance with um mostly the engineering standards. So construction plans, our applicants think after they've gotten approved, the woo-hoo, construction plans mean I get to pull my building permit. It doesn't. So I'm proposing that we change the name of this step to technical plans review. Again, this is all just an administrative review where they submit. Um about ninety percent plans to us so that we can ensure full compliance with not only the. Um conditions of their development approval, but also the conditions of the engineering standards. And so the the department representatives all get together with the applicant and go over their. Plans uh before they submit their building permit application. And in some cases, um this takes a lot of back and forth. Um with with some of our applicants, so um that's what we propose is changing the name.
Commissioner Zipper.
Um, I would have to say that I think technical plans, to me, it implies like shop drawings and. How the window blinds work. I would suggest maybe a pre-application review. So you know you haven't turned in the application. Um, it might make it a little clearer because as someone who sort of works in the field, I I wouldn't call those technical plans.
That would conflict with, I mean, we have a a formal pre-application um meeting. Uh huh. Which is actually before you even submit your land use application.
Oh.
Yeah, so that would conflict with that.
Got it.
But if you all can think of a different name.
Pre-submittal?
Um. It have to be clear that it would be pre-building permit.
Mm-hmm. Before you submit the permit application.
Post land use approval, pre-building permit.
Well, but that, but that, but that, but that.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's the only comment.
Carolyn, I think that that is the issue is that people think it's moved on to the building. Side, and it it's still a land use application.
Yeah. Well, we'll think on that.
Yeah. That's fine with me. Um. A location and extent. So we have come to realize that there is no square footage threshold for requiring a location and extent review application. So technically, any small project. Would have to go through this pro- uh process. Uh, we recommend setting a threshold of ten thousand square feet, and this is consistent with the site architectural threshold of when there's an administrative review versus when there's a planning and zoning commission review. Anything less than, excuse me. Anything less than ten thousand square feet is reviewed administratively.
So those uh last few um reviews we had, what what size were they?
Well, the last one was the CDOT. Project that I had, no, the last one we reviewed was the city's electric building, right?
Right.
Which is. Oh. I gotta say that was larger than ten thousand square feet, wasn't it, Jen?
So so when you say ten thousand square feet gross floor area, that means just the building, just the proposed structure, not the lot size.
Right. Correct. Yep. Um, this came up when we. I was working with the uh public works. I was working with the Public Works Department on a lift station. I mean, this thing was like 10 by 14. And I thought, oh, my gosh, I can't, I just can't make our folks go through the, the location and extent review process for a review of such, something that would otherwise be a shed. So that's why I'm suggesting at least some, some threshold. And I thought just to be consistent, I would suggest the 10,000 square feet. But if you all think something less than that is appropriate, I'm, I'm, again, I'm open to suggestions. This was just my, my thoughts.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Gretchen. Carolyn?
I'd like to see more like 1,000 square foot threshold. I think the city could build a really unattractive 10,000 square foot building. And I, I think it's important for us to review these and sort of keep an eye on what's going on with our infrastructure. So I'd be up for a lesser threshold.
I was gonna say 5,000. I was gonna drop it in half. That seems like a not-too-big, not-too-small kind of size for me. And it's not a shed, you know, it's not the pump station, lift station size.
Okay. All right, and the last one I wanted to talk about is the one that you all had reviewed over at least a couple meetings. And that is the, the design variant, the addition of design variance criteria to the code. So if you recall, well, these changes actually reflect, reflect your recommendations. So an applicant has to meet three criteria in this column A, section A. All, they have to meet all three of these. And then at least four of the criteria in this section B. And there are six total criteria. I think this is, I'm fairly confident this is consistent with what you all had, had recommended from our last meeting in, was it October? Or maybe even August? So that's, those are the, the changes that I wanted to highlight. And I feel that there are several that, that you all want to pull out for a further discussion. And I'm fine with that, so.
Out of which ones they were, Gretchen, did you take a tally?
Um, I was starting to, yeah.
I think it was five, six, and 17 for sure.
Oops, yeah, that's right, five, six, 17.
Now, how about all the?
And then the ninth, the ninth direction was just the square footage.
Yeah. Right, so if you can land on a recommendation for the square footage for the L and the location and extent review, then I'll just make, make that change for, make that change as part of the rec, your recommended approval.
2,500.
That's fine.
So, okay, so we're pulling out three numbers and it'd be nice to have a different square footage here.
Yeah, let me go back.
Then what are we gonna do with this? Are we actually approving what's ready to go and keep the rest for next time?
Yes.
Or approving, I mean, voting on what we want to do, yeah.
You're recommending that, that council approve these changes absent the five, six, 17. And let me just make sure. Yeah, five is the portable storage containers. Six is the solar panels.
Right.
Uh, sorry. Cease it.
17 was the residential transitional sign.
Signage requirement.
Hey, a quick question about this technical plan review thing. This is really just about the term, right?
Yeah, that's all the term. It doesn't change anything else except the term.
We're still gonna see what we've been seeing with elevations and colors and all that. This doesn't change any of that.
Does not change any of that.
Okay, so it's just about the term?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I'm kind of with, with Zippertly here that technical to me means how the HVAC works, works, and how the plumbing connects and all that. It, it's a little, a tad bit misleading for some construction professionals, probably.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not sure I have a solution. George, did you have something to add?
Well, you know, I think as long as the terms are defined somehow, then, you know, somebody could look and say, okay, this is what they're talking about. But I agree that it's, might be a little misleading, but don't look to me to be the one to come up with a better term.
I don't want to go from one misleading term to another. Maybe, maybe we just pull this one out for, because, I mean, it's not a terribly burning issue right now. And maybe we just pull this out for further consideration.
What do other municipalities call it?
Yeah, I'll, um, some of them, it's the construction plans. But I need to look at, at the codes that Clarion hasn't done. It's like, I can tell, you know, when I, when I type in searches for communities, I, I know you, you can tell Clarion's fingerprints.
Handwriting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bad thing. It's, it's all good. It's all good. But I'll, I'll come up with maybe some different options for that.
I think sometimes you hear it called like a preliminary planner review. But then that is also misleading.
Yeah.
It is, you're right.
Okay, we'll get, we'll give that some more think.
Can we get a number for Gretchen for number 19 to put it to rest?
19, oh, yeah, no, right, 19, a number somewhere between 1,000 and 5,000. And again, I mean, as you all know, if the number's not working out, we can certainly do further code revisions.
In that sense, I'll stick to the 5,000.
I like 5,000, too.
We could do that for now and move on.
All right. All right, that sounds good. Um.
Actually,
George.
I had something we didn't even discuss. And, and it was just a clarification on item two, where it's talking about 5,000 square feet and the slopes greater than 20%. And it.
Uh, okay, so this, this, there, there are table, sorry, George, I'll shut up. What is your question?
Yeah, my only concern is it references 70, 40, 20V. And I, and there's a table back there, it's 40.1 that, that says the same thing, I think, doesn't it? Is this, is this going to change that table as well?
No, no. The, the problem is that there's a table in the front part of the code, which is a summary of all the, of the zoning requirements for all land use, all land uses, or all zone districts, rather, sorry. And it says, right, the way it's written right now, it says one dwelling unit per 10,000 square feet. But when you go, actually go to that table in 040, 020B, it's 5,000 square feet. So I just needed to make that, that correction. It was a wrong.
My memory was that I had looked up 040.1 and it was, also said 10,000, but.
Well, let me make our 200, let's see, 040. 20B. Yeah, one dwelling. Uh-oh. 20%, one dwell, you're right, so where is that problem? You're right, George. Uh-oh, so maybe the problem is in the HP table. Sorry. Let's pull that one out. Because I think there's a problem with the HP zone district summary. Yeah, let's, let's, let's pull that one out, please.
Can you refresh my memory, Gretchen? Did we actually talk about this in one of our workshops? To go down to 5,000?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because I, I thought I remember talking about HP something, but I didn't remember what it was.
Yeah, we talked, um, gosh.
It's a while ago.
It was, I think it was more than a year ago about some the sensitive area protection standards.
That's what it was.
And some revisions. And it, the conversation got super involved. And so we just sort of tabled it at that time.
Yeah, so we didn't conclude it?
No, we didn't. And, and so I found the problem is actually in the table in the HP preservation, the district standards.
Okay.
I think that's, my code revision needs to be in that, that table and not this reference here that's on your screen. Because it is one dwelling, that, yeah, that, that's the problem. Okay.
You want to pull two as well, then?
I do. Thanks, George, appreciate it.
Sure, and did we talk about number 11 tonight? Did I sleep through that part?
What are you saying, George?
Well, it's, it's definitely a possibility.
Okay, sensitive area protection. Oh, this was just a, a wrong citation. Yeah, it, this, so, oh, what I'm doing is this 070, 090, 130, that's a reference from the old code. And so I'm updating it to where it's located in the new code.
Okay, and that, that talks about floodplain. Do we have a definition of what a floodplain is?
Uh, I hope so. Why would we? I don't see it right, right at the moment, George.
Gretchen, did, did that level get modified or changed or redefined with all the riparian talk?
Yeah, all of the riparian changes have been made to, I thought it was high watermark. Yeah, it is watermark, yep.
Wasn't there some definition with the Corps of Engineers or something like that?
That possibly that is in the, the waterways, special flood hazard area. So it's not, you know, in the back of the code, there are definitions. And I don't see where floodway or flood zone are defined, but I think it is referenced in, in that special flood area of the code. You guys are tough.
I don't think that affects, that doesn't affect what this item 11 does. I mean, that was just.
No, 11, 11 is just simply updating, getting it to the right location in the new code as opposed to where it was referenced in the old code.
George, are you asking, do we know what base flood level means these days?
Uh, yeah, I think that, it's a separate but connected discussion. And, and yeah, I don't know how that's defined or, or where we could even access to get that information specifically.
So all those terms are defined in the development in waterways section of the code.
What, what numbers?
It is 070 dot 040 dot 020. A paragraph D. D is in dog. And base flood elevation is also included in the definition. And it's, just so that you know, it's as, as defined on the FEMA maps.
Are those FEMA maps available online?
Well, they're available on, on the FEMA website. I don't think they're included on the city's website. So Marco, the ones that I have us pulling out are number 2, 5, 6, 17, and 18.
Okay, great. Okay.
So with that, I mean, that concludes obviously my presentation and I really appreciate the discussion. I'm gonna ask that, that you all recommend moving forward with all but 2, 5, 6, 17, and 18 with the findings that are found on page two of your staff report. And these then, except for the ones I, I've pulled out, those will go to city council for their consideration.
Gretchen, can I suggest that we also pull 22? Because it has the, the solar energy, the corresponding definitions.
Yep, yep, good catch, thank you.
Okay, I guess this would, this will conclude. Thank you, Gretchen. Appreciate what you did here. Um, let's see, I guess I'm entertaining a motion. Let's do this first, any additional questions or comments about all of this?
Marco, I, I do apologize, but I'm pulling 23 as well because it addresses portable storage containers and we're pulling the, the, them, that to talk, talk further.
Good thought.
Sorry.
Good, no, all good, good thought. So seven, seven items pulled?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yep.
Yeah, okay, great. So again, oh, I get any questions or comments? And I see Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
Thanks so much, Gretchen. I'm not sure who's controlling, but I have a question on, I think it's 20 in the proposed right there. Design variance criteria a little below. And I have a memory on the variance. The variance is the minimum variance that will afford relief of the subject standards of the code. I, I remember discussion that we all had on, on that. So I'm just, was, was it ever that it was on the left side? That that was sort of a required standard that had to be met, that it was the minimum variance that would afford relief? Rather than one that was selective?
You know, I do not know off the top of my head. I, I would have to go back to the recordings.
And I could be misremembering, so does anyone else, does that jump out to anyone else?
I remember that, too.
I remember that too. And we were talking about, um, like minimum setback variance, like do you, how far do you want to push it? I mean, the minimum is sort of hard to define. I, I remember talking about this.
Yeah, I think there was some pushback from some on that. Using that as a, as a hard and fast standard is what I remember.
Maybe it was that that I'm remembering. So it should stay in the right side.
It was with the place on Blake who wanted to build the, the big garage. That's when we talked about minimum, I think.
Well, and I think in that case, it was a standard we required.
Uh huh. Yeah, well, it would have been one of the seven. Yep.
So George, your memory is that this is an accurate presentation of where we got, how, how it's shown on the screen now?
It, it is from my memory that, um, you know, there were just the three that were the hard and fast and then, you know, multiple choice on the other side with, with this particular, um, alignment. But, you know, keep, keep in,
and we making it four.
Keep in mind that you're depending on an, an old memory here. So a memory of an old person.
I don't think my memory is of a young person. So, um, yeah, I think Sumner, what you just said made sense to me that we, we, then we described how many, so it's four. So I think that answers where I was just trying to remember. Thanks.
For a total of seven. Because we're sticking to the seven, but you have some choices. That's about all I remember. Okay, anymore, anymore questions or comments? I see none. Great. Uh, I guess this is a public hearing, so I should open this to the public. Anybody from the public here like to comment on these code? Uh, text amendments, please raise your hand. I see none. We'll close the public portion and we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion. In planning item 66 dash 20, uh, this is a recommendation to city council for all these co-text amendments with the, uh, permission of the, of, uh, number 2, 5, 6, 17, 18, 22, and 23 from the, uh, planning file presentation.
Can we just say so moved?
You can, I guess.
I'll second with the findings and conditions on page two of this staff report.
Right. So we have a, a motion in a second and we have findings.
Do we need to mention the modification of 19 Gretchen?
I think you should.
Square footage, yep. We landed on 5,000 square feet.
Right.
Okay, excellent. This, uh, everybody clear on this? Do we have, do we have everything in motion that we need? I think we do.
I'll second the addition of the clarification on 19.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, excellent. So any more discussion? Uh, or no, I guess discussion amongst the commission at this point. I'll see none, so I will call for the question.
Okay, Commissioner Grosskopf.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you Steve. And thank you, Commission and staff. This concludes our public hearings for tonight. Uh, we are on to commissioners' comments and Gretchen, if you could unshare your screen. That would be great. Thank you very much. So I can see everybody. So I can go down the list and we're going to start with Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Um, not much here. Happy holidays to everyone. Hope you have a safe and healthy time.
Thank you. Commissioner Grosskopf.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, everybody. I like your new background.
Thank you. Mr. Shaver?
Uh, nothing here except for holiday wishes and, um, get better Gretchen. I feel for your, your situation.
Thank you.
Thanks for your, um, thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wissing?
Hope Gretchen feels better. Thank you for probably doing this really challenging work with a brain fog.
It's amazing, isn't it?
I also had a really good, why we miss Ingrid Desp- oh. Why we miss Ingrid desperately, I wanted to just comment that she, I had a recently visited with her and she is really enjoying her time on soil. So that was, I was happy to hear that for her and potentially for us in the future. That's all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schacter?
Uh, just happy holidays everybody. One, one civic item. This, uh, city council meeting somewhere around 45 minutes into the agenda, there's supposed to be a presentation discussion with Colorado Department of Health and Environment, perhaps ahead of it Jen, I'm not sure. But anybody who's interested in hearing or viewing, uh, or trying to sort out county versus city, um, that might be a worthwhile tune in and there's a link on our city agendas for that. And, and again, once again, thanks to all the staff. Appreciate all the hard work all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing much to add. I just want to say thank you to everyone. Um, I think we had a successful year, even though some challenging times, but I think we did what we could. I am looking forward to in-person meetings again. Um, I have to be honest, I miss it. Um, other than that, happy holidays. Stay healthy, stay happy, do what you can. Germany, they nowadays say, they say be negative, but in your head positive. Moving on to, uh, Jen, Jen, any director's comments from you?
Well, I do actually have a director's comment, um, probably a couple. I mentioned that we're just doing a, another listening session, um, tomorrow with the police chief. If you're interested in participating in that, it will be interpreted into Spanish and kind of on the, the question of community policing and social justice and some of those questions. Um, and then we'll have a brief update about the United Stop the Spread, um, campaign from Angie Anderson. And, um, the other question that I have for you is about when we can return to in-person meetings. Um, Steve and Alyssa, who, uh, you got to know a little bit probably at the beginning of, um, the year when we were, um, having Alyssa go to every meeting for the whole city every day. Um, she and Steve are working on this plan to do some upgrades to the, um, the system to kind of facilitate the idea of a kind of a hybrid meeting if we were going to have in-person when we're able to do that and have an online component if we wanted to do that, our, um, kind of pieced together system over time is not really that capable of, of such a thing. Um, and so there's going to be some, some upgrades to the system and Alyssa wanted me to ask you some questions. So the other thing is that, somehow this year, even though it wasn't being used, the projector died, the true death. Um, and so the question is about replacing the projector with large kind of monitors, TV screens, um, that would be facing the dais and, um, facing the audience. Um, and with that, the, the question came up about removing the computers from the dais to make it a little more friendly. Um, I think the question is that they're kind of, or the concern is that they're kind of a barrier to people in between, you know, the, the folks sitting at the dais and the audience. And, um, so if that were to happen, the dais could be redesigned to have the monitors maybe lower. Um, or, you know, I think sometimes you see them kind of mounted in the dais. Um, or, or just relying on those kind of TV screens, the monitors. And so I just wanted to ask your feelings about that. I know that, um, whereas we provide, um, a computer to city councillors, we don't provide that to planning commission. So, um, looking kind of for some feedback about what you guys think about that? How reliant are you on the, the, the screen or the projector? Um, and then the other thing was, I, I think city council is, and this is just more informational, um, kind of not interested in having the lecturn, but having some sort of place where, um, presenters could be seated, um, so that it feels a little bit more comfortable. So I have some, you know, if you have any thoughts really quickly, um, Alyssa and Steve would be happy to, to hear them.
That sounds good. And anybody just chime in?
Hey, I, I really do use those, um, computers when we sit at that, what do you call it, a DS? Um, because I, uh, we're always pulling up the staff report and going back and looking at the, the drawings in order to come up with, you know, good questions and stuff, but I understand that they do sort of form a barrier. So I'd be up for having them lowered so that it seems like we're more engaged with the public. But we can't get rid of them. We need those.
I like the fact that we're saving paper. And if I, you know, that's just me, but if I have the agenda on a piece of paper, that's all I need if we can look it up in lowered screens. And, and, and the applicants or the group of applicants sitting in front of us would probably also be a little more personable, maybe is the right word.
I think it's possible to bring a personal device to, to sort of look at all the information that's needed, um, because it's all linked. The one bummer is that I do look at the staff presentation that way because it's hard to look behind. So I didn't quite understand if you had a different, um, description of how that might work, but it's, it would be awkward to have to pivot. And, and that is the one reason you would need a screen that is kind of directly tied to the staff. PowerPoint or whatever it is.
Where they would be, I think, hasn't been decided, but you know, I think either they could be suspended from the ceiling or, um, Alyssa and I had, and Steve hasn't heard this, so, um, you know, where there's like those panels that can go across and create a divider. I think the only time we've ever used them is during the coronavirus for court. Um, when we were trying to create a separation. Um, so the question is, could they be on the wall and on the arm? So that they could, you know, be flash against the wall most of the time and then kind of be extended out like so that you can, they would face you. Or suspended from the ceilings that you would, they would be like directly, you wouldn't be like having to move to see them. They would be kind of in front of you. But that is, it hasn't all been dialed in yet. Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, not really. I mean, that, that all makes sense to me. I wonder if this group has any appetite to have a city issued, um, you know, computer or tablet or something in front of them. If you did have that, or you could bring your own, I mean, that would be fine too. You, you guys will be looking out at the quote unquote audience. Uh, you could look at your own device and see whatever you wanted on your own device. We could hang a couple of screens up that would show what's actually being presented. And then we could hang a couple of screens facing the other way that the audience could see. And that's kind of the idea that we had. It gets a little bit more complicated when we try to, you know, do all this with, you know, on a zoom or something where everybody's voice messes with everybody else's voice and everybody's audio misses with everybody else's audio and that kind of stuff, but what do you guys think about having your own devices? Whether you bring them or whether they get issued by the city? Because we'd be happy to issue you guys, you know, uh, an iPad or a laptop or whatever you'd like.
I forgot about what Catherine said. When there, when there is a presentation, it's right in front of you on the screen and I, I, I enjoy that probably more than having to look up like I'm in a movie theater looking at a screen, uh, further away above the audience possibly, or above the, the first seat, row of seats there. Come think of it.
Steve, by, you know, during these calls, I'm using my phone for that information. It works fine. I'm thinking, I don't know if the city in this day and age has to buy us additional devices. We all have phones or iPads or notebooks or, I don't even know, maybe a Kindle would work. But again, I'm just saying in my case, having a device right by my side allows me to go to the staff report, allows me to go to the, um, all the different reports we're getting. Um, I'd be more concerned about our visual acuity um, and screens and font size that you're showing us, uh, on those monitors actually, but yeah, a, a device by my side for me works just fine. And my own device is adequate.
There's got to be a way that we could just launch a link and see the PowerPoint or the presentation live, almost like a zoom. I mean, I hear the audio piece, but I don't, there's got to be a way to, to not have to have a, a, a screen hanging in a room that it can just be right there on whatever device you're looking at.
And I, I think the idea is to put, you know, your own device in front of you that you guys could manage yourselves. And, you know, to your point, Sumner, the city wouldn't buy anything new. We can repurpose a bunch of stuff that, that we've already got. That's, you know, pretty basic. The idea about the screens would be just so you guys could look up in the corner of your eye and know what's actually being, you know, pushed out to the public. But I, I really see you guys kind of managing the meeting right in front of you on your own device with whatever you'd like to look at at the time.
How would it work where, you know, I think sometimes a presenter, an applicant comes in and they, there's that weirdo. It never seemed to work very well because they couldn't center it, but it did cause a projection of some kind of uh, static information that the applicant wanted to share.
Alyssa told me that the document camera, which is what she called it, um, it would stay. And I know that city council doesn't really love it either, but she assured me that it would stay.
Yeah, and that's to project something that you actually have a hard copy of and you wanted to throw up on the screen. I mean, if we completely got rid of the big screen behind you guys um, and let the audience look at a couple of screens that were maybe a little bit closer to them that would mirror what you guys are looking at. Uh, they would stand up at the computer or whatever, um, and present to you guys and just kind of be able to see what's actually being pushed out. But on their computer, they would be able to look at whatever they wanted to look at, which is probably their presentation.
Are you going to require comments to be taken in person? In the, in this hybrid environment you're discussing?
That's over my pay grade. I'll throw that one to Jen.
I, I think we're still working on building this spaceship.
I know in Congress they're working on that. So, you know.
I would think those TV screens would have to be rather large to see the details. Well, and for us and for, for the audience.
Right. And the audience would have to see some of the details. That's true. But if we put screens up in the audience that were pretty big that they could see, I think they could see those details. You guys would be looking at the details on your screen. And the only idea of having the screens up that faced you was just so you could know what was actually being presented on YouTube or, or whatever, because it's nice to know what, what's actually getting pushed out. When you're looking at your own, you know, whatever it is, spreadsheet or PDF or, or whatever, look at whatever you want. That's what's being pushed out to the public.
Well, I think it's valuable to have that to see because sometimes I'd like to go on my own device and look at something else. Reference something, uh, other portion of the packet or, or something on the internet that's cogent to the conversation. So having something up there, even if you normally look at your own device or whatever the device is in front of you, to have that to, to reference back and forth, I think would be beneficial from, from.
Was that helpful? All of us? Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
We'll keep thinking about it. Um, you know, Jen, when we think about what city council wants to do, Jen's always very good about saying, all right, well, let's, you know, make sure that P and Z is okay with whatever decision we make. So we'll bring this back to you again. I mean, this isn't something that's going to happen between now and the next time we get together. But yes, this was helpful. Thank you guys.
Excellent. Great. Anything else, Jen?
That's it. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Okay, again, stay healthy, stay happy, enjoy your holidays. We'll see you next year.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.